Good evening. We will call together our work session, another work session on the 2024-2025 budget. And thank you, everybody, for being here. David, what do you have for us to start off this evening?
Well, just a, just a couple, just a couple of brief reports from follow-up from last night. The, I gave you a copy of the positions. These are positions that had been removed from the budget. They total over a million dollars that we've been working on now for, throughout the course of the year. There's probably an additional, I would say conservatively, $300,000 plus in vacancies that occur throughout the year, others that may not be listed in that group. So I wanted to give you that. Also gave you an updated summary of the debt service types of stuff, so you have that. These were all emails earlier in the day. Let's see, gave you COLAs for everybody but Pulaski. We've been waiting for theirs to come in, so you had that. Gave you information on Tourism Office, information on what the savings from, the things you all talked about last night. Talked to Jerry about Mountain View Humane. We've looked at the Verge program. We think that just a little increase, just leave Verge alone and see what happens in the upcoming year as it works into the hub. Mountain View Humane, we're just using the Radford Animal Hospital across the street here, West End at Radford Animal Hospital for Spade and Newer, Newer Program, so we don't need anything there. And then the actual amount for New York City Community Services, the amount they asked for is 132, but we do 10% over what we did last year, which is that 64,000, 66,000, whatever it is. So that's the difference. Basically, you gained one of two things. A penny in the tax rate can go down to four cents, or you can put it over in your reserves, whatever y'all want to do.
Question on this, of these positions, and I know briefly before we were talking about Deputy Chief was a vacancy last year, how many of these positions?
Well, it was budgeted. These were, these were in the budget, and now they're not. So that's the difference. So anything that was vacant last year, we went through and took everything out. We've been in consult with the different departments. They're not ready to do anything moving forward. We've got shared positions, trying to see how, you know, looking at skills and things like that. Not talking about that one, but for everyone that we've got, as you all know, I've had the Assistant Manager position vacant a long time, pulled that one out this year just to make sure all of these were out. So we didn't want those totaling up in our numbers. And then we'll add them back in as we, the health of the economy improves, the health of the budget improves, those kinds of things. So, you know, like I say, probably a million and a half dollars in just personnel savings. Now, that's not to say every position had something to do. So it's been put on other people. It's been added to somewhere else. You know, our employees come out, they do. They, as I've reported a number of times, they, they show up, they, they put out, they do a great job. So everything has been put somewhere with additional, you know, with additional responsibility. So, you know, that's one of the reasons I've looked at the COLA the way I did, because there's just so many other things. But I did dial that back, thinking it would be maybe a little bit more palatable with the 3%. So that's less than the others around us and stays with the state number that is in. And I don't know if I was clear last night. So the state 3%, because I think you asked the question, the state 3% comes from the comp board. So we get revenue. So over on your revenue side, Calista's added in the 3% that comes from them. So everything else that would be 3% would just be ours. So any non-state position that we have is under our responsibility.
So at the top of the sheet, it says the orange lines are the positions split between different departments, but you're saying all of the?
Everything down to bottom, the total million forty is out, yeah.
So why were these in the budget last year if we were not hardcore planning on hiring for these? Like, I would think if you?
If I had to hire them, we just didn't hire them. So I just took everything out for savings.
I mean, I guess you need to budget for people that you want to hire, but that's a, that's a big number to have in there if you're not absolutely positive that you're gonna, to be holding on to.
Well, and some of them are retirees too, because we did e-RIP on that also. So some of them have been in, I mean, these are positions that need to go back in the budget. They're not removed to get rid of them forever. I mean?
No, but?
You know, Assistant Manager needs to be some, at some point in time. You know, Calista needs help, HR needs help, you know, Jerry. And, you know, at any given time, you know, we do have some float in both Police Officers and Fire where people have left or whatever. So, you know, that's, that's additional to what's there now. So you wanted all the positions I've taken out. That's what's been taken out to save us on the budget. Because there's no point in having it in the budget, because you've got to look at the revenue side. If you've got the expense side, you look at the revenue side, and if we're trying to work on revenue, we definitely don't want to see the expense there.
No, we don't.
With this, where you did have, say, at least six or $700,000 of these in last year's budget, we spent that money on other things, right? I mean, pretty much you moved it around and we spent it on other things over the course of the year?
We've tried not to, so it's in total budget, but the positions were in there, but we don't just?
Well, no, I know, but at the end of the year, either that or it would show as?
Oh, yeah, anytime you have savings somewhere, it helps us throughout the budget.
Is that going to be an issue for this year with things that you would have spent savings on this last year, not having that available next year?
I think the budget?
Because, I mean, that's what happens a lot of times, is positions stay empty, and even though you want to fill that position, you get around to March, April, May, and then you're able to pay for needed things that come up. I just want to make sure we didn't put ourselves in a bad position where we'd have to find that money next spring.
If I'm understanding, we've adjusted ourselves enough through this year. I mean, we didn't, we didn't expect, we didn't expect the collision of all the things, you know, 17% accumulated inflation, you know, it is what it is, you know, fewer people in our community, all those kinds of things adding up. Yeah, so now we've got a little bit better adjusted knowing how we can work better through cash flow and continue to save and be conservative. And I'm still going, just know that all the way up until the budget's adopted, I don't look for anything else to go in to the budget, but there may be some other things coming out, because we're still looking and evaluating and fixing and trying to see if there's places that you may see where something's spent. And if we know that a conference isn't going to be needed for somebody's education because they've already got it or don't need it till the following, we'll pull that out or whatever. So we're trying not to have anything extra or just in there. I don't like pla, I don't like placeholders, so that's been one of the big things we've been trying to do.
For now, with everything we've identified and all the additional savings we found, your original budget, as we talked about it yesterday, was predicated on a five cent tax increase once we go down to 64, so we'd be back up around 69. So at this point, we're four cent tax increase with everything we've identified, even by reducing COLA, by reducing other costs and things like that. And then at the end of the year, you're still projecting 300,000 to 400,000 in reserves if we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if you want to reduce the tax rate one cent?
It's 119 out of something.
If you decide you want to keep it in there, then the money would go to reserve. It would build on that eight, four, whatever it was, 487 or whatever it was number, it'd push you over a half a million dollars.
Question, so we've obviously all talked about and discussed the cuts. At what point do we need to make those? If, if, say, for example, if we are gonna get rid of COLA, or if we are gonna get rid of an agency, when do you need to know? Is that, is that tonight?
Pretty much, I'd like to know what we're doing tonight. We gotta, we gotta know what the maximum not to exceed. I've got to get the advertisement in by the end, by Thursday for the not to exceed amount. It doesn't mean, you know, you could still be making cuts and make changes and still do, you know, 64 cents or whatever you want to do on the tax rate, but we got to put the maximum amount in. It doesn't need to be, unless y'all have got other ideas, something else that doesn't need to be any more than the 68 cents maximum. And then the budget itself will be, we'll advertise, I've got another week to put that in, but I need to know now because I've got to get the advertisement for it. It's got to be ready. But all the decisions, the first reading is the, whatever, what do we say, 16th? 16th at 5:30. So we'll have the public hearing and do the first reading that night. You can still make changes all the way up to second reading. The second reading will be that, that next week at a regular meeting.
So, so tonight, you need a good idea of where this is going?
You know, like I say, if there's something else you're looking at, you want me to look at for cuts, I can continue to send you notes as I, if it's something I can't give you the answer on tonight. I've skimmed through, I see a couple of other places, listen, I've got questions on, that we're, we're looking at. Maybe another, maybe another couple hundred thousand dollars, but I've got to be sure when I get into it. But, you know, when you take, take the amounts and take the increases that the big numbers off, you know, we do end up being less than last year's budget.
So I'm?
Three years' audited budget. And in everything that we've been doing, we've been pretty much basing everything on the FY '23 audited number, because that's the one we know is, is a true number, looking at 22, looking at 21, and then figuring out where we're going from there.
So my hangup is still asking for the citizens to pay more in taxes while we're doing a COLA, because that's money coming out of their pocket. I'm still, I'm still hung up on that.
But it's just city employees. It's not all of Radford citizens, right?
I'm just saying, who pays the ta, the citizens are paying the taxes for the COLA. And so we're, you know, we're asking them to take money out of their pocket, and, you know, it, it, I just have, I have a problem with that right now because we are escalating. And I'm, we've been flatlining on our taxes for a reason. The economy has struggled, our citizens have struggled, we come out of COVID. All those reasons, we've tried. And we've also tried to buffer our city employees with, with good rates of increases to, I mean, we understand that it's not been an easy job for them the last few years either. But where we sit today, it's unfortunate, but I still think we're going to have to ask our citizens to pay more in taxes because we cannot stay flatlined. There's just no way to do that with the rate of inflation and the cost to do business. But I really do feel like a COLA right now is terrible optics while we're asking the city, citizens to pay more to cover it right now. I, I, I'm struggling with that. I don't know if anyone else is, but?
Yeah, David, likewise, same here too. I think it's, yeah, I don't, I just don't think it's affordable, you know, right now, maybe down the road, take a look at it, but I think right now it's just not affordable at all. And also, I'm just curious, like, so how much money are we saving when we're looking, looking ahead? I mean, how much money are we saving looking into 2025?
So 1% of COLA is $97,000. So we were, I think your original budget was proposing 4%, so that's a little less than $400,000. I mean, that's over the amount of interest that we're paying for the loan.
And don't tie the COLA, the overall increase of the budget is not just because of the COLA, it's other stuff.
I know that, I realize that, yes.
Don't tie the two together because it's unfair for the employees. The, the total budget increase is driving the four cent, now, four cent increase in that, plus the other things in the Electric Department due to wholesale power adjustments. So that's what's driving the increases. But the, what you're looking at, the total savings ultimately is, is what you're asking?
I'm talking about the total, total savings, big picture. How much altogether are we?
What's my total? It's 400, it's, it's six over a million, two, not counting Public Works because I don't count that because it's basically restricted fund. But you're, you're over a million and a half, million eight, something like that.
That you found to save? I mean, that's?
Reserve, be in your reserve accounts.
I'll, I'll expand a little bit on it, and I kind of touched on it last night. But I look at it, and kudos to the prior council because you guys were able to, to help with some of those percentages of COLA during some hard times, you know, but we have taken care of our citizen, or our employees, and we need to continue to do so. I mean, they, this is the worst stance, I guess, I've had to take since being on council. It's tough, but I do think it's necessary for a one-year. And I know when we're, we're talking about being competitive and being able to retain employees that, you know, but we can't be upholding to what the state and other localities have. Their situations are a little different than ours, and I hate that we're on the footing that we're on. But if we're going to be serious about getting our reserves where we want them to be and getting back on track, I, I would hope that our employees will believe in us and, and work through this with us. And we will continue to show just how much we do appreciate them and hope to revisit this and be able to correct it in the future. But tough times create tough decisions, and this is a tough decision. And I, I do think that at this point for this year, we need to pass on that. And it's hard. I don't say that with any, there's nothing about this conversation that I enjoy. But that, that is, I would, I would agree, and that's kind of where I'm at with it.
So I asked David if he would put together another option for us to consider, which might be a bonus instead of an actual raise. That has, it's not as good, but it's something. And it has options that allow us to do something one year and then revisit it. It's not something that's a permanent budget increase. For a $1,000 bonus per person, it's $275,100. For a $500 bonus, it's 137,550. Some of the logic behind that, too, that's still a lot of money, and I get that. Some of the logic behind that is our employees who are on the lowest end of the scale would really get percentage-wise as close as we could get them to, to something bigger. And it, it's fair for everybody. It's at least equitable as, as far as that goes. But trying to find something, because again, I'm very sensitive. I didn't want to do anything on the tax rate this year if we could help it and let that go for a year, but that's just not possible for us to be fiscally responsible and get our reserves back and, and go to a different place. But having said that, I, I do think trying to find something, whether it's a 1% increase total or a $500 bonus or somewhere in that scheme, in that measure, I think it does make sense because even though it may just be a token amount, it's at least something to show our employees that we, we recognize that and not to put a larger burden on them. With that, though, we do have an increase that's going to be mandated on us come January with the minimum wage increase. Do we know what that total dollar amount is? Right. Well, and then that also creates a compression, so you would have brand-new people making higher minimum wage or equal minimum wage to some folks who've been here a couple of years. So either, you know, looking at the possible bonus of somewhere in that, that range or a 1% from a practical standpoint, may solve some of the problems. There's going to be a dollar amount that we can't control, that we're going to have to increase regardless. Now, it may not be significant, but to get to minimum wage, there are positions, either we would have fewer people working for us, or we raise that minimum wage.
So I'm, I'm still struggling with this this year. Again, I think in good faith, when we've been able to give to this, to our city employees, we certainly have in the, in bonuses as well as in pay increases. But I think while we're asking for our taxpayers to pay this much more in taxes to get us where we need to be, we can't transfer it from one pocket to another. We need to transfer it to, to, to our city to make sure that we're solvent and we're comfortable where we need to be to run business like we need to, because our city employees also want a job. And so we need to make sure there's a job for them to go to every day, and so we need to make sure that our city's comfortable. And so I would love to do all the great things. That's just not an option. So we're going to be in a position, unfortunately, as you and I've discussed, that everyone is going to be a little upset with this because we're, I think I said before, we're all going to be uncomfortable. When we raise taxes, they come out of my pocket too. They come out of all, all of our pockets. So we're, we're ending up with everyone else. And I don't like taxes any more than anyone else does. But I think right now, we really just need to, to like, make the city, the, the city as a priority. And as unfortunate as it is, I just don't see another feasible or practical or responsible way to do it right now.
And I agree. Additionally, David, thank you for getting that information that I asked for yesterday for the other localities over 2020 until now. And we have stayed very competitive with localities that are much bigger, have many more resources than we do, and we have stayed very comparable to that in the past. So that number made me, you know, feel, there's no way to feel better about this situation, but we have compensated, like you said, even when we really didn't have the funds to, to make sure that we were doing everything that we could. And it is tough times right now. I absolutely agree with, with Seth and Jesse. It's a difficult decision, and we don't want to make it. But I mean, it, it's, we have to make tough choices right now to be able to give back later on next year or the year after, or whenever we decide that that's going to be a fiscally responsible decision.
With that $300,000 coming out of there then, and the, we, we had already eliminated one cent potentially on the tax increase. The $300,000 is just a little less than three cents of that. At this point, we're looking at a penny and a half, correct? But there are still a couple of costs we've got to figure out with that increase with the minimum wage piece. It's not, I know it's not big, but it's something, you know, whether it's?
Flatline. We don't want to decrease the tax rate and decrease the COLA, so we're flatlined. I mean, we, we?
We need to build some buffers. We need to build some buffers.
Again, I feel like the same thing that we've tried to do for our city employees, we've tried to do for our citizens, if you look at our rate of increase, that we really haven't done that. So when we have been able to, we've tried to equally take care of our citizens as well as to take care of our employees. But there is a time when people want their streets repaired. They want the, the parks mode and this all cost. And so we are at the juncture where to do the things we need to do, we can't flatline either. So I see it as we need to raise the taxes. There's just no way around it. Our city employees are going to have to hang tight and be patient. We do other things as well. We try to build in extra days around the holidays. We try to give them that little extra day here and there when we can. But like I said, at the end of the day, we have to make sure that our city is solid. And so at this point, I would not vote for a COLA or for bonuses.
I, I wouldn't, and I, and as, against taxes as I am, I'm comfortable with keeping it at, at the 5% that, the tax rate that you've built in?
I am too.
To, to rebuild our pot, strengthen our position, and get back to where we need to be. It's just tough measures. It's just, you have to do things that stink, that stinks. And, you know, I, I mean, just from a business perspective, it, it, it's hard for me to, if we were going to, you know, give a raise at $388,000 in the pot and we're still financing the loan. I mean, and I would like to see those funds address tackling that, and I, and I totally agree. I don't, I think it would probably be a push to try to pay off that 4 million this year and then just turn around and be in the same situation. But I do think that we need to slide some of those funds towards that and slide some to reserves and then patch up areas where we need. And hopefully, this is a different conversation next year, but I don't think if we take these measures, we get out of this. I think that these are necessary, they're tough, and, you know, if, if you want to build a better tomorrow, we're going to have to make some, some tough choices today.
Agreed.
So everybody still wants to do five cents?
I do. Do I want to? No. Do I think it's, it's fiscally responsible? Yes.
That's what your thought is?
That we were going to do things we needed to do, not things we wanted to do. And this is something we need to do, not want at all.
So $595,000 is approximately what that generates. Without having the COLA in there, that's going to put another 400,000 or so toward the reserves or whatever cost savings? 97,000, right?
Yeah, 97,000.
Okay.
And sorry, we don't mean to change things to make them more difficult for you to try to balance it again, and? It's not. I mean, I know it, I know, I know that's difficult. But, and I'm, and I know that we, you know, probably took a little bit of time to make this choice because we all were very upset by it, and, I mean, I even reached out and told you I didn't want my council salary anymore. But it, I mean, it's hard on, on you guys, and I appreciate all the changes that we are asking and all of the information that we're giving you 30 minutes before we have a council meeting. But we appreciate you taking into account all of our opinions.
We'll remove the 3% COLA and advertise my, my five cent tax increase.
Is there anything else anybody wanted to talk about, additional cuts or changes or suggestions?
So when you, I, I may have missed this, when you said, so we took away the Mountain View because we're going to utilize the? Oh, well, good. Okay, are they going to be the same kind of expense, like 100 cats is going to cost us? Oh, okay. Okay. And then I also saw where we're taking away the kennel attendant. I know that she'd been wanting that person to be full-time, and now we're taking that person away altogether. She, I mean, is she real upset about that? Because that's, I know that?
She's got somebody there now, so?
Okay, all right. Because I know that the animal shelter, I don't like to take anything away from them, and I know they're short-staffed anyway, like everybody is, but?
I guess I'd like to follow up on the, the tourism building, since I did bring that up as something that I wanted to consider eliminating. It does appear that we don't have an early release clause on that. So if we tried to get out of it, we'd simply still have to pay for it. So we're gonna, I, I do want us, at, you know, at, at another time, if we have it, I do want to figure out how to utilize it, and I don't think just simple volunteers is always the best measure. They, they are not always the most knowledgeable. If they're students that may be volunteering from the university, they may not be indigenous here, and so I'm, I'm a little concerned about how we, how we move forward. And if we're going to have a presence, I want it to be a meaningful presence. I was going to say, when I was talking about perhaps not having that building there, another thing that come to my mind is our Wells Fargo building, because it's sitting vacant. And so it's not costing us anything, to be clear. It is, it is paying for itself. That is something that I want us to maybe get together again on and figure out what, what is the best option? How can we use that either as a city entity or as a community? Whether that's finding a business to take it over. But, yeah, I know we've used it for transportation and some other things, but I think we need to really get a plan in place. It's sitting empty on Main Street, which we don't want. And now we have a building sitting empty on Main Street, so. And then the other thing I do want to, I, I felt like I needed to commend Kim on that I felt like perhaps was lost. This isn't, we don't like tourism, or we don't think someone's doing a good job, so let's eliminate the building. That is, there's no correlation with that. It is, how many hours are we using this building? It doesn't make sense to proceed in that direction. Where I see her out and about, that I feel like probably a lot of the sales takes place, is I see her at the events. So in the, on the weekends, in the evenings, and sometimes when the building isn't necessarily open here, she does have a table at the events. So we are, she is out and about, but that may also mean that this building is closed once again to people that are coming in, because she's, you know, she's one person. So she is, she is out and about, so I did not in any way mean to insinuate that. It was really just a cost-effectiveness with that building sitting there and another one sitting empty on Main Street. So I do want to, at some point, revisit the Wells Fargo building as well as how to maximize that tourism, since we're beefing up on tourism.
On that Wells Fargo bills, building, could we lease that as a leasing agent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was one of the points.
The project is all around the building, so we need parking. And remember, it's generating substantial revenue because Wells Fargo is paying us for the? I figured if we ever had to tear it down, I think it was?
But I do think?
It's, it's actually making money. We're thinking through the building. It's not costing a whole lot there, but Kim knows it's there.
In our, in our East Main Street projects, I mean, you know, we've adjusted our sales a little bit on that, even into a more phasing approach. So maybe we should look at that and say, okay, in our phasing approach, is there a way to make that profitable opposed to a parking lot? Like, maybe at this juncture, we're better off to see, you know, while we're kind of working with Main Street, maybe we keep the long-term vision of additional parking, but maybe we also look at how do we drive some immediate revenue while it's just sitting there? That's my thought on that.
Well, and I think we all had a meeting with somebody, you know, at the end of last month who expressed interest in wanting to lease things downtown. So maybe that is an option that we don't know about that may be coming down the pipeline, so. But I do think while this, that building may not be the right fit, I do think we do need to have a place for tourism and people to come, not here. I think this is a little bit too? Not here. I think this is a little bit too formal. Um, but I do think if we, you know, enrollment is planning to grow and we're planning to, you know, what if we did get an industry and there were a lot more people and there needs to be a place for people to go and see that kind of thing. So I do like the idea of revisiting in the future for sure. But I don't think that we need to get out of the lease just to be paying the same amount of money as if we would to keep it. Agreed.
Agreed. And there, and you know, when, when you talk tour, you have the Easter egg bunny hunt that's coming on. You have the, all the concert series, you know, a lot, a lot of those things. It, it's a component of what makes Radford run. And I think refocusing on that and, you know, maybe we could do a better job facilitating that. I mean, I know we're talking cuts right now, but, um, we keep working hard. We're not going to be here forever and, um, relooking at that, restaffing that, doing what we need to do. I mean, I, I, certainly not a knock on tourism from my perspective either. I think that's a big piece of, of what we do. And, you know, Kim, Kim wears that hat and wears it well. So, um, I, I would echo that. And I think the Wells Fargo building is, has all kinds of potential. Um, you talk about, it would be an awesome restaurant or, I mean, I, I don't know how you would work it out. Obviously some modifications and get some people in there. I don't know what the city's prerogative would be to keep or sell or lease. But I do think that we need, it's something that we should maybe sit down. I don't know if that would be to EDA or Kim or, or whoever and game plan our strategy with that in the future. Cause I do think we could maximize it more than we are.
Well, why don't we-
And we can't sell it.
As we, well, right.
Right.
As we get through budget, why don't we have another work session with EDA? We've got a lot of stuff to talk about anyway. And we could have a discussion about maximizing any spaces that we have and go from there. So, um, from a budget perspective tonight, is there anything else anybody would like to see us discuss?
I need to grab that sheet, find it out of my sheets. Um, do we have the railroad on there? Do we take that out?
What about the airport and the, wasn't there something, okay? Okay, but we-
Well, and between the two, I understand the airport, if we are trying to-
Yeah.
Have businesses come in and they need another way to transport. So, but I, the railroad, I still feel like the invested interest in that is Montgomery County, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, uh, maybe, you know, more so than us at this point. I mean, we may have a seat at the table, but do we really have a vote that's meaningful at this point?
I don't think so.
How about David and I reach out to Kevin Byrd, who is the, uh, executive director of the Regional Commission? And to Mike Barber, who's the chair of the Train Station Authority and let us have a conversation about it and see where we are. So I can bring back to you next week, um, what that would look like and, and what's going on with that before we make a final decision. We don't have to obviously decide that one tonight, but-
So that's eighty-five hundred?
Yeah.
So tell me again why it went down so much between last year and this year, from twenty-four, five to eight, five? It was twenty-four, five. Oh, okay. All right.
At least. And, and I, I think it's worth a discussion. Um, you know, like I said, David and I serve on that. Let us run some, uh, conversation with Kevin and, and Mike to see what that looks like and, and what our situation may be. Uh, I know they'd like to keep the coalition. I struggle with it myself. I struggle with the whole project, to be honest with you. And that's not necessarily a local thing. That's where the state has made significant changes to the project itself. So, you know, what made a hundred percent sense for us ten years ago when we were talking about all the possible locations, may or may not now. And we have to look at that. But I'm happy to have that conversation and we'll figure that out and get back to you. What else?
Those are my main thing, my main takeaways from last night, to be honest with you.
So David, what I'd like to do if we could, as we go through this, is to be able to explain to folks, and everybody's a different situation and I get that. But on average, what this is going to mean typically in Radford, if you're at a, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and use this much electricity, you're looking at over a year's period, five hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, whatever that is. No, I get that. But what I'd like us to do is be able to say for the- I know, but we could do several different points along the way. We could do one just on real estate tax and we could do one just on electricity to say, your monthly bill is going to look like this up to a thousand. You know, I know we've got a little bit of that, but what does that mean? Is it ten dollars extra for most people? Is it fifteen dollars extra? And then what does this five percent look like typically for most people? Over, you know, again, I know it's hard, but I think it would make sense for us to do it to be able to be informed and also to be able to answer those questions. I know people have reached out to us.
I just want to know what the percentage per kilowatt is. And I mean, I just want to know the, the actual change. I don't need to know that other stuff.
But with all of this, um, I think you had projected four hundred thousand plus for our real estate. That would be toward revenues. That's up to about seven hundred thousand now, depending. I know we got to run some numbers for a reserve for unrestricted. And then if we do what we're talking about on electric, that would come in and we would still have a hundred and fifty thousand or so on reserves for that. I think that's what you sent us. Does that sound familiar? We're transferring three point nine million and then it was going to get you up to how much?
And just, I mean, just to say this out loud again, you know, just in the twenty twenty-four budget, it costs the city twenty-three point four percent more in electric.
Mm-huh.
Costs. Right. I just want to say that again. Like these are the reasons that we're doing what we're doing. That's a huge number to eat. You cannot continue to eat that as a city and stay-
I do think that's important for us to share because it's, that's just one metric that has, has been a, um, an inflationary piece. I, I think the other areas have really hit us hard and, um, you know, looking at three, four, five hundred thousand dollars and other inflationary costs and, and general fund things, whether it's equipment or parts or whatever along that line. You're talking literally millions of dollars because again, we've all tried to figure out, a year ago, we were in a different place. Here we are now. We didn't suddenly spend an extra five million dollars all of a sudden, um, just on a project or something like that. It's come out in different ways through inflation and we're tight. We've been tight for a long time. We use reserves to keep from having to put more on the citizens coming out of COVID. Uh, we haven't raised other than for the school. We haven't raised, uh, real estate taxes, uh, other than for the, um, electric rate in twenty eighteen. We haven't raised base rate. So at some point, it does get to where you're running behind and that makes it tough.
Yeah, I do think that's a misunderstanding that's out there. The-
Right.
Coronavirus money, you could not save it. It was, it was an impossibility. They did not even allow you to save the money. You could not use it to supplant your revenues. That was very first thing-
And the vast majority of that went to our first responders.
Went to, went to pay first responders and-
Fire department improvements that we had to have, pieces of equipment. We bought an ambulance. We bought things that addressed some of the COVID issues.
We invested back in the community too. We had a, what, seventy businesses that got-
Yes.
Economic development incentives to, for lost revenue, uh, for additions they could make to their restaurants, uh, businesses, things like that, to make them, um, environmentally friendly. Uh, we did, uh, let's see, investments in, uh, all of these buildings to put up the safety things. The outdoor, be able to pay your bill, the municipal building.
Gloves, the masks, the-
Boxes and boxes. So it's not, it's, it's not, it's not hanging on shelf. It's not sitting in a secret account. It's not out there.
And it wasn't wasted.
It wasn't, wasn't wasted. It went to, um, the things that were on our list, uh, that you mentioned, Mayor, a few of those. And then all the other things were associated with coronavirus relief type things. And you had to follow that strict guidelines. It was a single audited, uh, which you all, many of you are familiar with, the single audit. So it had to go through that, um, process. You know, folks trying to find, well, where this dollar is for this. Well, it, it was total what you were able to spend and what went to, it's hard to give that number.
Where, where, was the Corona dollar for dollar match? So forever Corona dollar that you, it was not?
No match. It was based on population. And, uh, every, as far as I know, every, uh, local government, every county government, every tribal unit, every, what was the other category, Jenny? It was something else. Um, it was a nu- Yeah, no, the, the groups that got it.
The groups that got it. I don't-
Yeah, maybe it was, but it was like five different groups that got the money and, and it all flowed out of the federal government. It went to the state government and then the state government delineated it out based on the population that was provided. That's how the state government ended up with a lot of extra money that went to these, these other things down the road. Because they ended up with the, kind of like the opioid money. They're, they're getting a large percentage that they will dole out for different projects and that kind of thing. So what Radford got was given to us in two tranches over the two-year period of time, three-year, two years ago, three years ago, whatever it was now. It's hard to believe it's-
I know. Three years, it was four, three years since we got the money, four years ago, right during this time, we were getting into it.
Has, has the majority of, you know, our, our reserves, has that been just cost related that we've been for rising costs? Is that where you would say? So, so for example, I, I've been asked, well, if, the question that I asked you, was the Corona or was that money on a dollar for dollar match? And is, did we have to use reserves to match that? I, I wasn't sitting on council, so I don't know.
We had to use some reserves to keep up the rising costs of everything around us beyond what was-
What that?
And that, that, well, that's going to get into a nut.
Right. But yeah. Right.
Turn your mic back on.
Keep your mic on because we'll get blasted if you can't hear what you're saying.
If we are giving entitlements, we know best what is best for Radford and its entitlement. And to give it to you and then tell you what you got to spend it on, doesn't help us.
Doesn't fit in your categories.
No.
I'm thankful that we had that money because there's a lot of things we had to do that I don't know that we'd have been able to do otherwise. And it replaced lost income too.
It's pointless to turn it back in just for the principle of things. Cause we got, we got some really, I mean-
We got good things out of it. I mean-
Some outdoor things. We, we did-
We solved a huge problem at the fire department with it. I mean, we did a lot of stuff that had to be done.
Dollars were spent in the fire department between, between the fire department building addition, uh, the ambulance and the fire truck. We spent, well, heck, that was probably nearly three million dollars in- Yeah, the decon trailer. Uh, and then there was another million dollars. So there's four, over four there that was spent on the building improvements that were needed for the coronavirus. And then another couple million that went towards, uh, public safety overtime, things like that. And then, uh, PPE and some of the other things that, that you had mentioned south there. Uh, and then you could do outdoor things. So that's what kind of helped promote while you weren't using direct with coronavirus for like your skateboard park, your improvements to Hodge Field, your improvements to the different fields. It was to get people outside, making sure that life was good and that they weren't indoors. Then we also did air handling improvements in like the rec center. We did some improvements in the, say, what did we do?
In the courthouse, the, the jury, or not the jury, but the, um, I remember them having to do that in the courtroom.
Equipment. I think you redid the, you took out an arcade and did a complete, which that room is awesome if you haven't been there.
And I mean, the bottom line of this is, you know, there's a narrative that it could have been different if we had just done one thing different or this thing different. And that's really not the case. When you go back and look at it, you can nitpick any single project. You can say, oh, we didn't need this or we didn't need that. All of that added together is probably less than a million dollars anyway. Uh, but I think the investments we've made have been investments in our growth, investments in our quality of life, investments in our people, investments in things that will pay off for years to come. And it's, it, it's what we're elected to do is not just to say do nothing, but to try to find those pathways. Now, I do think what hit us in the last eighteen months is inflation, particularly in areas that affect this city uniquely.
And it followed that money.
It did.
Inflation happened as, when some money started going out, inflation went nuts.
And, and you know, the electric piece is totally out of our control. Obviously, if we could change one thing, that would probably be one of the things we'd really change. That's completely out of our control. We get a bill and we have to pay it and that makes it really hard. I know we have worked to reduce our costs. Uh, we have worked to improve our system so that it's more efficient. We've looked for a lot of things. But it is, it's frustrating and, and it's frustrating for it to have happened so quickly. Really, as we looked at the last two budgets, we were not in a position where we were at a brink. We even talked about it. I asked, should we raise taxes last year? Did we need to raise them the year before? You know, granted, we didn't want to do those things because we're trying not to put a burden on people, but was it prudent? Things change quickly and we have to adjust quickly and we have to move forward. The good news is-
And I think associated with that is, you know, we, when you, and the other governments are like that. They, they became reliant on that money for two and a half years. And that throws you off a little bit in what you're doing. So that, so that reliance changes up how you do budgets, how you do things. And the problem with us, we're, we don't have, we're a small community. I mean, we're limited in nine square miles and, you know, the number of, of restaurants and, and businesses and homes that we can have limits us where, you know, an area like, you know, the Christiansburg area, you've got every, you know, every time you go over there's a new something going in in that.
Even with that, our neighbors in Montgomery County are looking at a very similar, uh, percent raise on their, their rate. Obviously that brings in a lot more money, but even with four point four million dollars growth that I think they had to start with, they're having to look at additional increases just to be able to meet their needs as well.
But y'all are, y'all are limited. Pretty much you just got three, three categories. You, you got your meal sales lodging and your real estate. That's your, that's your, that's your big ones other than what you have in your, uh, enterprise funds. And what's changed the most significantly, when you, remember back to those graphs from twenty thirteen?
Yeah.
When we had, uh, textiles and we had foundry and we had other things here, we now have, have none of that. So where the, the enterprise funds were able to carry you in many years, now those funds have got to support themselves. So we've got to gradually get beyond that transfer from the electric fund to the general fund. And then, um, pretty much we get away from it with water anyway. It's been back and forth on water over the years. Cause you know, we, we, you need to get back to water. You need to ramp back up water. You need to ramp back up electric pretty quick in a couple of years. So I'm not, not as concerned. I, I continue to be concerned as I have been for a long, long time on the general fund and the health of general fund. Because you just don't have that many places to go. And, you know, that's probably the biggest impact we've had from a community that's nearly fifty percent non-taxable.
Yeah, that's huge. And, and I will say there is opportunity-
Certain people about the-
Yes, forty-five percent, did you say, of our real estate is non-taxable? We get no money from it. That's half.
So that's every piece of property that's non-taxable.
Huge number.
And I just want to say a, a couple of, of brief things because I, I think, you know, we've, we've hammered in where we, we, we need to be right now. I just want to say, with any of the decisions that I've ever made in nearly, well, I guess a little over a decade in public service, I, I want you to nitpick me. I want to have the opportunity to answer all your questions, but just come to me. It's, you know, the, the misinformation that I find most troubling. So I am more than happy to share with anyone the decisions that we've made and why along the way. In fact, I would, I would welcome that. Email me. Let's go get coffee. I'm, I'm up for that and I want nothing more than that. So please reach out to me, um, nitpick any decision that I've made. I would love to discuss it and elaborate on that with you. So, and then the last thing I, I want to add on this is that we're all feeling this, this crunch with finances in our own homes with the economy. So everything that you're experiencing in your home with rising costs, we do here too. Because the cost to do business and to provide the things that we'd normally provide, just like in our homes, it's costing us more. And we've done our very best to buffer that for the last few years because we understand it's, it's difficult times. We're all going through them ourselves. We all have the same inflation that we're looking at. So just know that we've done our very best to balance that. And we're just at a point now where we just cannot run effectively or efficiently by circumventing the fact that these, this inflation has to be addressed, just like in our own home. So. inflation has to be addressed, just like in our own home. So that's just my final thoughts on those things.
Anything else you wanted to share?
Come back to me.
Okay.
I've lost my train of thought. There's someone else.
Uh, yes. Likewise, you know, I know, th, this is tough. It's tough on everybody. Uh, you know, I know there's a lot of people out there that are having a hard time making ends meet, and, and, you know, believe me, I understand. And, and everything that we're discussing up here is tough. And I did not, I was not envious of coming tonight and bringing up the, you know, talking about people's money, and, and I don't enjoy it one bit, you know, as far as that goes. But making cuts is never easy. And, but if you don't make them, it gets harder down the road. So you can, kinda, kinda like the old saying, you, you can pay me now or pay me later. So, uh, and we're, and, and I firmly believe that everybody here, their heart is at the right place. I know that Da, Davids, everybody here, everybody on City Council, and everybody in this room wants to do the right thing. And we got, we may have different perspectives on how to do it. But at the end of the day, we read the emails, we talk to the people, we listen to the people, and that helps to form the opinion that I have, that everybody up here has. That's, that's where all of this comes from. Comes from everybody out there. So, so that, that says a lot for the heart of Radford. The heart of Radford is here, right outside the door. That's where the heart is. Um, one thing I, I do wanna bring up, and something that's really on my mind, and maybe David, you can, you know, catch us up on, are you, I know that hit that we'll have coming, you know, just kinda give us, give us an idea. If, if there's anything, anything new there that, uh, in relation to maybe a number or something, give us an idea of, you know, the, uh, Rep University.
Student population? Is that what you're asking about?
CoGen.
Oh, you're talking about CoGen?
Yeah, CoGen, yes.
There's still a lot we don't know. I mean, that's the whole thing. I think that's the hardest part on that.
Well, and that's.
Well, CoGen's gonna be May, of, of May of twenty-six, uh, when it formally gets kicked in. And, uh, it's not just you walk away. There, there's gonna be a standby power. The city of Radford's gotta be able to acquire and have enough ability that when they go down for maintenance, or the thing blows up, or there's some issue, I shouldn't use the word blow up, but, uh, you know, the thing quits working, there's something that goes on, then there'll be standby power, and that may very well be, it may be equal to what, what it is now. I mean, we don't, we don't know. We've got, we're working through that piece of it. We've got a meeting coming up in two weeks with that, and we got a consultant that's helping us with that stand power, standby power rate.
I guess, I guess.
Actually, there'll actually be some savings on our end. We put a transformer in on the university campus on Sunday. So those are things we won't do anymore.
Right, okay. But, but, but that was just one of the, I mean, one of the concerns I had coming in here tonight.
Yeah.
I had it on my mind. It's, it's kinda, it, it's uncharted water that we're in, and we don't know really the outcome. And, and.
We own nearly all the, um, more than half of the transformers on the university campus.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a substation down there next to the police building. All of those will be capital improvements that will be evaluated, and they will acquire as well. So there'll be, there'll be revenue sides of that.
Okay.
I think that's been the hardest part of that, is, you know, we know we didn't really want to go down that path. That was expressed multiple times. But we just really don't know what the final outcome's gonna be.
Right.
I mean, if we were back in the day where we were making a lot more profit on electric as well, it might be easier to calculate that it'd be X amount different. But that's, that's a hard piece. I, I think that's been one of the hardest things, is we can't say it's a hundred thousand, half a million, million, two-million-dollar hit. And a lot of numbers have been thrown out there. We just simply don't know. I think that's been one of the hard parts for us about it. Um, did you have something else you wanted to add? I didn't wanna cut you off before you.
But also keep in mind that, that whatever there, and I knew the number, and I couldn't, I've looked at some numbers, I can't tell you right now. But whatever the cost of purchase power is for us, for them, we won't be purchasing now.
Right.
Whenever that starts.
Okay.
So that goes down with the revenue. So it's not, it's not we're losing, we're not get, we're lo, not losing all this revenue, still having to pay this high cost of power. We'll, and, and that's what the companies that are putting in proposals for our power for 2026 are looking at, what, because they are aware, this, they're not, they're not bidding on power supply for Radford based on the university. They're basing it on that load coming off.
And standby power, to me, should have a premium price attached to it.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I agree.
Did you have anything else, Bobby?
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Kelly, what do you have for us this evening? Anything else?
I don't have anything else. I mean, I, I think I've said everything that, that I can say. It's difficult choices, and I don't think anybody here is happy about it. Um, and I'm sorry that it's, we're in the situation that we're in. But, um, I don't think that the current council has anything to do but to try to, try to get us in a better place. And, and I think that's what we're trying to do, so.
Thank you. Seth, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I won't rehash everything that I said, but I will take the time to, again, thank you, David, and Steph. I know you guys have spent hours on this, and you're about to spend a couple more because of us. And I tossed and turned last night, probably will again tonight. Yeah, yeah. And there, and there's nothing, you know, there's nothing fun about this, you know, it, it, tough times, tough decisions. But I do think that making these tough decisions are gonna make us better tomorrow. Um, it's not fun, but necessary. And so I do, I appreciate you and your team's work and, and always being available and providing us, every single one of us with information as needed. So I just wanted to extend that thank you to you. And, um, yeah, I think that's, that's the only thing I'll add.
Well, I'll say thank you to everybody, and thank you to council. I know that this isn't easy for anybody. I don't think anybody runs for council saying, I'm gonna raise taxes and cut services and do things that people don't like. Um, and it's really hard. Uh, my hope is that once we get to the final piece, that this is a five-oh vote, uh, that together as consensus, even though there's individual things each of us probably don't like. That does make a difference, because I think it helps send a message to our community that this wasn't one, or two, or three people's decision, one way or another. I think that's really important, that we're working together to try to find things, even if we don't agree on every single piece. Um, the good news for the city of Radford, and I always like to have some good news in our discussion, even with what we're talking about, and I do recognize that any penny we ask from anybody is a burden. But even with what we're talking about, our taxes will be lower than our neighbors. Our, um, electric rate will be lower than those folks around us that use AEP and Appalachian Power. We are still trying to run this community as efficiently as possible, with as least burden as possible. And those are things we have to keep in mind. There's a lot more we could be doing if we had a similar tax rate to a Christiansburg, or a Pulaski, or a, a town of Blacksburg, but that's just not where we are. And, um, you know, I think what we're trying to do is to be considerate of everybody as much as possible, no matter how much it hurts. You know, my hope had really been, we wouldn't see any tax increase on real estate this year. We could work through the reassessment and have the Board of Equalization do their work by September, and then we'd be in a little bit better place to fully understand all the implication. Uh, we're doing the best we can with what we can, and I don't think anybody likes to raise taxes to cause a burden on somebody, especially during a, a tough economic time. But those are positives. We are continuing to invest in this community, and I think that's crucial. Uh, the West End, West Radford Commerce Park is going to be a catalyst for growing West Radford, the west end of the city. That's really, really important to all of us. The East Main Street project is gonna be a catalyst to help improve business opportunities and encourage folks to utilize the buildings and businesses down there. That's really important. The New River Water Trail that receives one, one and a half million dollars of federal funding for the Radford-Pulaski stretch will be an economic driver for us. Um, you know, the investments that are being made are seeds that are sown. It's just, you know, saying we've got a garden that's gonna come to fruition down the road doesn't help us today, and I get that. And that's really hard. Um, I do still want people to ask us questions. Please come to our meetings and ask questions if you have them. I hope the vitriol can die down a little bit. This is where we are. I think you're hearing from everybody that nobody really wants to be here, and that we're doing our very best to not only triage how we have arrived at this, to see if there's significant changes that need to be made, or, uh, what we need to do to move forward as a community. But I do appreciate the questions and the conversation. I was having a conversation with a citizen this afternoon, just trying to help them understand, uh, you know, how things have evolved. And you may not watch every single council meeting. That may not be your form of, of education and entertainment that you wanna participate in, but I think being aware does matter. And I encourage everybody to be involved. Uh, come to our meetings, talk with us, but also serve on boards and commissions. We have vacancies. Consider running for office. Uh, come to these meetings, take notes, and ask questions, and figure out, okay, if I were sitting in that seat, what would I do? And how would I move us forward? As a community of ten square miles, with some of the challenges we have, we have some uncomfortable realities that we work with all the time. And I know, you know, Jesse and I, for the last six years, and, and the, the fellow members of council for the last year and some change, have been working with some of those uncomfortable realities. David, you're about forty years into working with uncomfortable realities, and I do appreciate it. And I know everybody works so hard. I'm gonna quit talking. I wanna say thank you to everybody. Um, if there is anything else, we can still adjust the budget right up to the time we pass it. Um, we can still, you know, try to figure out any possible improvements to get us to a better place. Uh, it does sound like we're in a consensus to advertise a five-cent tax rate increase. So we drop back to sixty-four, we advertise five-cent maximum. Again, that could change, lower, but it won't go higher. Uh, but we're required by law to do that. So that's kind of where we are with everything. And, uh, does anybody have any correction or change to that? I think that's where everybody is, right? Okay. All right. With that, we will take a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Say goodnight.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.